Kate, could we have roll call, please?
Certainly. All right. Kidd?
Here.
Bryson?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Knudsen?
Here.
Shannon?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Feuerborn?
Here. Okay. Richard, are there any agenda changes or revisions that we need to know about?
Not really. You do have a slightly revised agenda, I think, at your seat for item 5.1. The only change, specifying in 5.1, it's a eight lot subdivision, or seven lot subdivision, not an eight lot subdivision.
Okay. 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 Moving right along then. Next is public comments on non-agenda items 6, 7, and 8. Would anybody like to speak on agenda items 6, 7, and 8? Kate, would you like to come forward?
This is agenda items 6, 7, and 8.
Is this public? No, not yet. Oh, okay. Thank you.
I don't think we did minutes yet.
Huh? Oh, I got ahead of myself. I'm sorry. Well, next is a request. Thank you. You should be over here. Okay. And next is a request for approval of the minutes from September 18th, 2012. Commissioners, you've all had copies of the minutes. Are there any changes or revisions? Or additions? If not, may we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next. Sorry about that. I got ahead of myself. Public comments on 6, 7, or 8. Evidently, there are none, so next on the agenda...
All the comments on, I'm sorry, you have non-agenda items and agenda items 6, 7, and 8.
I'm sorry. Am I getting ahead of myself?
I don't know what that is. That's what the public comment is.
Okay.
An agenda item. You can speak if you want. They can't pay any attention to it in terms of... I don't know. Does somebody want to speak? I don't know if anybody wants to speak.
Okay. Was there anybody like to speak on items number 6, 7, or 8?
Or non-agenda.
Or non-agenda items, yes. Okay. Yes, sir. Come forward. State your address, mailing address into the microphone, please.
Sure. Maybe I'm not here at the wrong time. Is this, my name is Carl Mosley, and my question is, or actually, I was to speak on the walking and biking plan. Is this the time you wish to...
This is not, no. This will, this won't be on the public hearing or record, so...
Okay. Thank you.
I've probably confused things tonight. I don't know why, but I have. Okay. Okay. Next. We have, are we okay over there?
It says non-agenda items.
No, we're not. Hold on, just one second.
It's up to them if they want. Yeah, I understand. No. You know, it's always up to the commission if they want to allow somebody to speak. That is ultimately the commission's call. We're just trying to get straight of what this should normally say. Normally, when we have a public hearing, that the time for the comment is the time we've scheduled for the public hearing. For some reason, it states that, it sounds like they could make comments during the public comment time, when normally we have that public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Slated. So that's our confusion over here, and we're sorry to make... You're very clear about what you're doing, so we'll try to not make it more confusing.
Okay. So now we can go forward.
This is the time for public comment on anything that is not listed as a public hearing.
Okay.
If he wants to speak. If anybody wants to speak, this will be their time to speak, except if the item is listed for a public hearing. Then that has to be later.
Which is 6.
Well, thank you very much. At least a pardon.
Oh, thank you.
But if this, but if this is testimony about your application, the record is closed on your application.
Okay. So please, again, state your name and address into the...
My name is Kent Seda, and I reside at 2545 Southwest Anchor Avenue, Lincoln City, Oregon. And I apologize for being a little disheveled, but trying to get caught up while we have the good weather, so I go deer hunting. But anyway, I wanted to thank the planning department for approving our subdivision, and I had it professionally drawn up, because before I'd done it myself. And I wanted to give copies of it, so that you could see how it would actually look, since we didn't have a subdivision last year. This is the only one in about two years.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
The record is closed, but the final order has not been adopted.
Right.
So my suggestion is to keep any material that Mr. Seda wants to give you at the end of the meeting, if you can distribute that to the council. But because the record is closed, they shouldn't get any more information on your application before they approve their final order.
Okay.
That makes me happy, but I just wanted to thank you again, and say I appreciate it, and we're moving forward.
Okay.
It looks like now is a good time, really, for, we've reached a stage, kind of, in Lincoln City and the nation, where the real estate market has plummeted, and property values have gone down. But in my opinion, we're now down at the bottom, and this is a 30-year opportunity that haven't had since '80, in which property values now will start to go up, lots will become in short supply, and I think our economy's going to be heading back up. So thanks for doing that. That's one reason we did the subdivision. Appreciate your foresightedness in approving it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else, any comments at this time? Okay. Next on our agenda is item 5.1. Get my script out. Final orders, resolutions, and written communications. Okay. The commission is about to vote on a final order for a subdivision, preliminary plat file S U B 2011-01. The applicant is Kent Ray Seda, and the property owners are Kent R. Seda and Mary M. Seda. The final order is a written record of the commission's decision that followed its public hearing held on September 18th, 2012. The planning commission's decision for approval of a seven-lot subdivision, subject to a number of conditions. A final order reports the findings of the commission, explaining how the decision relates to the evaluation criteria. It includes the vote of each member, and briefly states the basis for any minority vote. The vote on a final order is not meant to be a second vote on the subject of the hearing. If the final order accurately reflects the findings of the majority and the decision, the commissioner should approve the final order. Is there a motion to adopt final order 2012-06, or the decision on file S U B 2011-01? May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt final order 2012-06. Kent Seda, read the rest of it as well.
That's sufficient. Okay.
We have a second, please?
Second.
We have roll call, please.
Knudsen?
Yes.
Kidd?
Yes.
Williams?
I'm going to have to recuse myself on this.
Bryson?
I'm going to have to recuse myself. I wasn't here.
Okay. Shannon?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Feuerborn?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, commissioners. Next, we're moving on to public hearings. Get my script out for that.
I'm sorry. You've just approved the final order, and I'm sorry, I had a correction, and I forgot to...
We got sidetracked, and I forgot all about that.
...give you. If you'd be willing to hear me out on this, this is basically a technical and not substantive amendment to the revised final order that you just adopted. And under the, on page 2, under the word "authority," I wanted to clarify that that section, the third word just says 1604030, that that's municipal code, 1604030, and the rest of that sentence should be in parentheses and end with three dots. So it would be according to municipal code 1604030, parentheses, Oregon cities and counties are required by law to control the subdivision of land within their jurisdiction, dot, 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 close parentheses.
Okay.
It's always good to make things clear.
Okay. So do we don't, do we need...
It's a Scrivener's error, and so I would ask you if you would just adopt a resolution delegating authority to me to correct that Scrivener's error.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we need a roll call?
Aye, this is fine.
Aye. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, the public hearing is now open to allow public comment regarding the Lincoln City Walking and Biking Plan. The walking and biking plan will be incorporated as part of the city's transportation system plan, which is expected to be completed in 2014. The planning commission's role in this process is to consider any written or oral comments or testimony, as well as information from staff, and present a recommendation to the city council, who will hold an additional public hearing. The city council may adopt the planning commission's recommendation, may adopt a different recommendation, or may make, or may take other action, including declining to make a decision. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone, and begin by stating your name and mailing address. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Staff report, please.
Okay. I'll just start from here tonight, and then I will turn it over to our consultants who are here. I want to mention that we do have Patrick Wingard in our audience, and he is our new D L C D liaison, and he is going to be serving on the T S P PAC, or TAC, I should say. And we do have a couple, but now we have at least one PAC member here who worked through this whole process, and I believe he's going to speak later. So I would like to mention that I did get one audience from Joyce Odell Lemer, and she followed up the workshop, the letter in the NewsGuard with an email. She was particularly concerned that we move ahead with this plan. I'm just sort of paraphrasing here. And she says, "Please don't let these plans be put on hold." And she offers her assistance in helping implement the plan. So, and I believe you all have that in your packet. I do also want to mention that we had the workshop on the 18th with the city council, and I thought it went quite well. We didn't have too much comment on most items, but we did talk a little bit about funding. And then in the newspaper article, we had a nice newspaper article covering the plan. Again, it hit this question of whether or not the plan can be implemented without raising taxes. And I, the council, the consultants will get into that a little bit, but I just want to say that there are many things we can do to implement this plan, given the limited amount of money we do have now, and the staff expertise we have at the local level and at the state level. And so we are planning to move ahead if this plan is adopted, with a number of implementation measures. And if the community chooses to raise increased revenues through additional fees or taxes, then, you know, that's all the more that we can do to get the plan implemented. So with that, I will turn the floor over to our two consultants. We have Kate Lyman, who is with C H 2 M Hill, and Mike Tressider with Alta Planning and Design. And they will be presenting the draft plan to you tonight. And I just also want to acknowledge that we have David Hilton in the audience, and he has been our project manager from ODOT, who has helped us work through this process and has been very effective for us. So be quiet now, and let somebody else talk.
Great. Thank you very much, Debra. There are two main goals for our presentation to you tonight. Firstly, we want to give you an overview of the contents of the plan, and we recognize that a lot of this material was presented to you two weeks ago, but we feel that it's important to make sure that anyone who's here tonight in the audience or listening in has a good understanding of what is in the plan. So we appreciate your patience with some of the repetition. And then, secondly, we want to provide you with further details of implementation of the plan, as Debra mentioned, and some of that is in response to the comments we heard from you two weeks ago at the joint workshop. There are four main chapters of the biking and walking plan. Chapter 1 of the plan is where we really set the stage for why we are doing this plan, why biking and walking is important, and why it's important in Lincoln City. We also, that chapter also talks about the goals and objectives of the plan, and how the plan will be used, and how it relates to the transportation system plan. Chapter 2 documents existing conditions for biking and walking in Lincoln City. And the information in chapter 2 really came from a variety of sources. Firstly, we did a technical analysis, where as a project management team, we looked at data using geographic information systems, and using the fieldwork that we did to find out what facilities are provided for biking and walking today. We also relied heavily on public comment for this section of the plan. We had a very interactive work session with our project advisory committee, where we worked through and talked to people about their concerns about specific locations within Lincoln City that they find problematic for walking and biking, and specific improvements that they would like to see. We also have hosted a project website through the duration of this project, and it was very active during the phase of the project, where we were looking at existing conditions. We have an input map on the project website that is Google-based, and members of the public really put points on the map and told us specifically where they were concerned about biking and walking at specific places in Lincoln City. We had a questionnaire, where we got over 100 responses. It was both online and distributed in print form at different places throughout the city. And finally, our public event that we held for this plan in January was really focused on asking people what their concerns were about existing conditions for biking and walking, and we had over 200 people come to that public event. So what you see in chapter 2 now is really a compilation of a number of sources, and what we feel is a good description of how people feel about biking and walking today. Chapter 3 of the plan really lays out the vision for the future network of biking and walking facilities within Lincoln City, and what we feel are appropriate treatments along each type of facility that we've laid out. And finally, chapter 4 of the plan provides a strategy for implementation of the plan over a five-year time period. There are also a number of appendices to the plan that can be used for reference in the future. Every technical memoranda that we produced as part of this plan is included as an appendix. We also have summaries of all of the public involvement activities that we did through the duration of the past year, included as an appendix to the plan. This is the vision for walking and biking in Lincoln City that the project advisory committee came up with. The project advisory committee wants to see a safe, convenient, and accessible network of routes that encourages bicycling and walking, and provides viable alternatives to motor-vehicle use here in Lincoln City. And the point I'd like to make is that this plan is aspirational, and we purposely wrote it to be flexible, so that it can be adapted to whatever the funding situation is in the future in the city. If the city has small amounts of money available for improvements in the future, the plan is still useful, but it does also provide the framework for the city to be able to seek more funding if the city council and planning commission so chooses. I'd like to just briefly go over some of the needs for biking and walking that we heard from citizens throughout the duration of this project, and these are some of the highlights from chapter 2 in the plan. Chapter 2 divides the city up into three sections, north, central, and south, so that is how I will discuss them here. The northern part of the city, for our planning process, extends from the northern city limits to 21st Street. Some of the concerns we heard in this area included safety concerns about the intersection of US 101 and East Devils Lake Road. Many, many people told us that that is problematic to walk and bike through that intersection. We also heard that many citizens are looking for a more direct connection to both the Chinookwens Casino and to the Lighthouse Square retail area. People really want to be able to walk there and to bike there, and they don't necessarily feel safe doing so now. We also heard a number of people concerned about Northeast Holmes Road. It provides an important connection to several residences in this area of the city, and people would like to see better facilities along it. Similarly, we heard about the need for improvements along West Devils Lake Road in this area of the city. We heard also about the need for improved connections to Ocean Lake Elementary School and the Lincoln City Seventh Day Adventist School, both along Northeast 22nd. And finally, in this area of the city, we heard over and over again that people are interested in easier and safer ways to cross US 101. In the central part of the city, which we defined as between 21st Street and Southeast 14th, we heard about the need for a better connection across the D River along US 101. People don't necessarily feel safe walking and biking there now. We also heard a need for an improved connection to the outlet malls at East Devils Lake Road. We heard a need for an improved connection to the Canyon Park Beach Access, and improved connections to Regatta Park. In the southern part of the city, which we defined as Southeast 14th Street to the south, the southern city limits, we heard that people are concerned with the lack of sidewalks and bike lanes along US 101 in general. And residents of Cutler City would like to be able to walk and bike to other parts of the city, and don't necessarily feel that it's easy to do so now. We also heard a lot of concerns about the Schooner Creek Bridge, and we heard that there needs to be improved connections to the three schools along Southeast High School Drive. Now, what I just went over is not the entirety of what we heard from the public, but it's just a sampling of what's in chapter 2, and part of the reasons that we feel that this plan is important and does represent the needs of the community. Chapter 3 divides the city into four roadway types, the roadways within the city. US 101 is its own roadway type, because it is so important and so unique in its function. The next three roadway types all apply to local streets. High-use local streets, as they relate to walking and biking, are those that have high traffic volumes, serve commercial land uses, and serve key walking and biking destinations. So a few examples of high-use local streets in our plan are Northeast Holmes Road, Northeast 14th Street, and Southeast High School Drive. Medium-use local streets are those that have moderate traffic volumes. They serve a mix of land uses, including residential and commercial, and they provide secondary connections to key destinations. So a few examples of medium-use local streets are Northwest 34th Street, Southeast 3rd Street, and Southwest 50th Street. Low-use local streets are primarily residential streets with low traffic volumes. So just a few examples of those include Northwest 33rd Street, Southeast Neptune Avenue, and Southwest Harbor Avenue. This is the map that's included in our plan that depicts roadway types in the north part of the city. There are, I will just go over the high-use local streets quickly, but as you can see on the map, medium-use and low-use local streets are also noted. High-use local streets in the north part of the city include Northwest 40th Street and 40th Place, Northwest 44th Street, Northwest Logan Road, Northeast 22nd Street and 28th Street, Northeast Holmes Road, Northeast West Devils Lake Road, Northwest 30th Street, Northwest 39th Street, Northwest Jetty Avenue, Northwest 31st Place, and Northeast East Devils Lake Road. This map depicts roadway types in the central part of the city. The high-use local streets here include Northeast and Northwest 14th Street, Northeast West Devils Lake Road, Northwest 15th Street, Northwest 12th Street, Northwest Inlet Avenue, Northwest 2nd Drive, Northwest Harbor Avenue, Northwest Jetty Avenue, and Southeast East Devils Lake Road. And finally, the, these, this is the roadway types map for the south part of the city. High-use local streets here, in this part of the city, include Southeast High School Drive, Southeast 48th Place, Southeast 19th Street, and Southwest 51st Street. Corresponding to these roadway types are a set of design treatments that the plan recommends for each. So starting with US 101, the plan recommends that the preferred facility for pedestrians on US 101 is a sidewalk. However, recognizing that sidewalks might not be feasible to provide in all places along US 101, the alternatives, as depicted in the plan, include a shared-use path and a shared-use shoulder. Recommended facility in the plan for US 101 for bicyclists is a bike lane, but again, recognizing that it might not be feasible in all areas, the alternatives include a shared roadway, a shared-use path, and a shared-use shoulder. The recommended facility for pedestrians on high-use local streets, similar to US 101, is a sidewalk, and the alternative provided in the plan is a shared-use path. The recommended facility for bicyclists on high-use local streets is a bike lane with a shared roadway and a shared-use path with charos as alternatives. High-use local streets are also recommended in our plan to have traffic calming, and the alternatives for providing traffic calming include a speed hump, traffic circle, and a chicane. Medium-use local streets, similar to high-use local streets, are recommended to have sidewalks in places where it's feasible to do so. But the alternatives to that for medium-use local streets include a pedestrian path or a shared street. The recommended facility for bikes on medium-use local streets is a shared roadway. Traffic calming is also recommended on medium-use local streets with the same option as high-use local streets. For low-use local streets, the recommended facility for pedestrians is a pedestrian path or a shared street, and the alternative to that is a sidewalk in places where it makes sense. The recommended facility for bikes on low-use local streets is either the existing condition of the street itself, or providing charos. And traffic calming is also recommended for low-use local streets, but the options are different. Here, the plan recommends either one-way couplets or one-way couplets with chicanes for low-use local streets. So I guess I will sum up this portion of the presentation by saying that we purposely designed the plan to be flexible, and that is why there are recommended treatments, but a number of alternatives to those treatments for each roadway type in the plan. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mike, who will talk about implementation measures.
Thank you, Kate. So we've really, in terms of implementation, looked at identifying some short-term implementation measures, looking at both some low-hanging fruit, as well as some of that aspirational ideas that we've included in the plan. So I'm going to go through some of those, talk about some of the funding options, and then wrap up our presentation. So one of the first short-term implementation measures we identified was empowering a citizen committee to really take ownership of this plan, and to work with city staff and city officials to keep moving this plan forward, help identify and prioritize projects that are coming out of this plan, or come out of the transportation system plan, help get those projects onto appropriate funding lists, either at the statewide level, on the transportation improvement plan, or in the city level, the capital improvement plan. The citizen committee could either be a new committee, or be one of the existing committees already at the city, a sustainability committee, traffic safety committee. This is something that can be considered further in this process. Some of the facility, facility-wide, the short-term implementation measures, we focused on working with ODOT on US 101. We heard this quite consistently from staff, from the citizens at all of our public events, working with our public advisory committee, that 101 is really that main artery that, you know, everybody wants to use, drivers, but bicyclists and pedestrians as well. So we identified six specific measures, specific to US 101 to work on, and that included forwarding the road... the road diet study that we did as part of this plan, and that mean, we looked at portions of 101 from a very high level and thought about what if the cross-section was changed from, say, four lanes to three lanes? And at a very high level, it worked, but it was on the edge, just given the traffic volumes, traffic speeds, truck volumes on 101. But we thought that it was still relevant enough that to forward into the Transportation System Plan study to have that looked at further as perhaps one idea for improving biking and walking conditions there along 101. The next four measures we looked at really were working with 101 to take a very detailed survey of 101 in terms of what the roadway widths are, what the lane widths are, what the existing shoulder widths are, to really identify those locations where sidewalk infill could occur, where bike lanes could be located, perhaps just through a restriping project. So working there with 101 to identify specific locations for projects. And then the last measure was really working with ODOT, as we mentioned last time at our last joint meeting, was looking at some of the signal timing along 101, as well as the pedestrian signal timing, and perhaps either changing some of the signal timing or updating the pedestrian signal heads to give pedestrians a greater confidence that they can certainly cross 101 at all these locations safely and securely. So the, and then, actually, can you go back one? I apologize. And then the second sort of facility-wide, short-term implementation measure was looking at some of these short-term, low-cost solutions on these higher-use local streets. And as Kate noted, some of these, all of these roadways and design types had recommended options and alternative options. And some of these alternative options could be implemented on a short-term basis while funding was secured for some of the longer-term recommended options. So some of those streets would be Northeast Logan Road, Northeast West Devils Lake Road, Northwest Jetty Avenue, Northwest Harbor Avenue, Northeast Holmes Road, Northeast 14th Street, Southeast High School Drive, Northeast East Devils Lake Road, and Northeast 22nd Street. And these are all major roads that provide connections to important destinations within the city, as well as to 101, which really still serves as that main connector from north to south in the city. In addition, the plan identifies several amendments or changes to the comprehensive plan and to the municipal code that would really just encourage biking and walking and identify biking and walking as important elements of transportation within the city and really just sort of help institutionalize some of that belief within the city code. And as well as developing a signage plan for the city, signage in this sense could be both wayfinding for bicyclists, particularly tourist bicyclists, who aren't exactly sure perhaps where they are or where the destinations are. The example in the bottom left shows a sign that has directions to specific locations in terms of, it could either be a business district, it could be just city hall, library, with both time and distance for biking. The example in the right is a sign that really is telling motorists, telling bicyclists, telling pedestrians that you're entering an area where this is a shared street. This is a street that has a lot of uses and is really communicating to drivers through visuals only that this is something that you need to be aware of, and you need to slow down to watch for activity occurring on this street. And then in addition to some of the physical infrastructure improvements, some of the other low-hanging fruit would be implementing some educational curricula, working with, continuing to work with safe routes to school, identifying opportunities through public safety to work with, the police department, working with diversion programs, you know, if perhaps someone gets a ticket, having an educational option for a class on driver safety, bicycle safety, pedestrian safety in lieu of a ticket. And then developing and promoting events for promoting walking and biking. This is something that that committee that I mentioned earlier might take on as one of their charges, is identifying those opportunities to celebrate walking and biking and to celebrate the accomplishments in Lincoln City and any new developments that occur. So that's, I think that's what I wanted to say on implementation measures. So how do we fund these options? So currently, there actually are several ways that projects are getting funded within Lincoln City, and these will continue. So there are opportunities, as Deborah mentioned, to continue to fund some of these projects that come out of this plan, be that through just public works projects, projects that are already going on that the city is doing, looking at incorporating elements from this plan and elements of good design that support biking and walking within the community. That's already occurring, that certainly will continue to occur. The city will continue to apply for grant funding, identifying projects and appropriate grants to go after to fund some of the projects within this plan. Getting projects onto the statewide Transportation Improvement Plan is something that's important. Having them in an adopted plan is one of those elements that is a benefit for that. Forming local improvement districts, discussing with different neighbors, working with different neighborhoods, to identify those that are receptive to the idea of forming a local improvement district to make some of these improvements, to install sidewalks, to perhaps do some traffic calming in their neighborhood. So that's another opportunity. I think it was mentioned at our last workshop that public-private partnerships, working with the tribe, working with other private entities, to identify opportunities for either in lieu contributions or securing some funding from some private entities. The existing urban renewal area, there's already some projects identified that will support and benefit biking and walking, so that's currently an option. And there are currently some areas where traffic impact fees have been collected, and how we identify those funds and what projects are funded through those funds can certainly support biking and walking as well. If we want to continue, and as Kate mentioned, you know, this is an aspirational plan, and to push forward and to be aggressive in developing this plan and some of the projects within this plan, and we've also identified additional potential funding sources that the city may pursue, and this may include a local option tax for capital improvements, a road user maintenance fee for improving the maintenance or a local gas tax. And these, all these funding sources may be considered for biking and walking only, or perhaps, as the TSP process continues, looking at some of these funding sources in context of the greater transportation system within the city. So there's, within the plan, there's several recommendations on these types of funding And then long-term, what we've really identified is looking at identifying and funding and building new facilities, continuing with a priority on US 101, and then continuing to look at the high-use local streets, medium-use local streets, low-use local streets, you know, as those priorities are identified by city staff, by perhaps the citizen committee. So continuing to build those. Maintenance of facilities, it's always important to consider the maintenance. We want to make sure that as these facilities are built, that the city can certainly continue to maintain them so that we don't have issues with degradation of any of these facilities. Continuing education and encouragement, and I can't say enough about that in terms of, you know, all residents, all visitors to the city in terms of bicyclists, pedestrians, drivers, making sure that as we move forward with the implementation of this and as we see more bicyclists and pedestrians out there, that we understand how we're supposed to behave as a driver, as a pedestrian, as a bicyclist. So continuing that. And then, if possible, you know, monitoring and evaluation. There were some counts done as part of this process, and continuing to do a count process and really see as we build these facilities, how does the growth of the facilities relate to the growth of the number of bicyclists and walkers within the city. So as Kate mentioned at the beginning, you know, reasons to adopt this plan, this is a comprehensive plan. We looked at the entire city, we looked at all the roadways within the city, and they each have a classification, a typology. Yet it's flexible. You know, when she was describing the different design types available, we certainly identified recommended design types, but we understand that given the built environments, given the topography, that there needs some flexibility there, and that's certainly built into the plan. Throughout our PAC and our public events, there was strong community support for encouraging biking and walking, for providing those facilities for people to bike and walk within the city. And then, you know, the plan provides some immediate solutions, but there's also those long-term solutions, those aspirational solutions. So there's certainly things in the plan that can be done this year. There are certain things in the plan that are going to be 10 years out, 20 years out. But it provides both those immediate and long-term solutions. So I want to thank you for your time, and we'll turn it over to, back to the chairman.
Okay, commissioners, any questions?
There's a lot to swallow here. You know, I was part of this from the beginning, and just the, I'm impressed by how much has come together. I could go on and on with a million questions. One thing that I haven't seen discussed too much is the consideration of emergency services in relation to any of the changes that we're talking about. As far as, one of the big concerns I had was with road diet on 101. You know, we've seen here in the city, when we have a single car accident, it stops traffic, especially when we're in, say, no man's land down in Nell Scott. Have we addressed that within this?
We didn't, I wouldn't say we specifically looked at that, but I think that the flexibility that is provided there in terms of the roadway design, particularly in terms of traffic calming measures, is, one of the reasons it was there is to allow for that issue of fire access, ambulance access on the local streets. Within US 101, it is certainly a consideration for that road diet, and that is something, one of the reasons that it's at a high level, we didn't quite get into that particular, but it's something that is, does need to be considered, and one of the reasons that we said it was a tentative, yes, we think the road diet should look, continue, but it needs to be studied further. And there are several reasons for that.
And within that, because I'm not an expert by any means on speed bumps and chicanes and things like that, has there been any studies on impacts of that on emergency services?
Yeah, I mean, the city of Portland did some studies in terms of both the speed humps or the speed bumps, as well as narrowing streets down. And so, there are certain widths that you can't go below, but service vehicles can, you know, fit on a 20-foot street, and the speed humps really don't pose much of a problem. You can also design them so that they have essentially cutouts for the wheels at the wheelbase for those larger vehicles. So they're certainly both, they're design ways to get around them.
But it won't affect speed of service?
No, it should not, it does not affect speed of service. And, but in addition, if that's still a concern, you know, you can either study it further or, you know, the flexibility is there to go for a, maybe institute some different types of treatments rather than a speed hump or a chicane. So there's flexibility within the design guidelines as well.
Then the next question I had was concerning.
Can I say one thing to Don? We did have the police chief and the fire chief both serving on our Project Advisory Committee for that very reason, so that we would make sure we weren't causing problems.
Right, and that was one of the discussions I've had with them, was my concern, you know, is this being addressed?
Yeah, great.
Okay. And then the next is on signage. Is there a universally adopted signage code, or what characters do we put on our signs?
If you go back to the, so, the sign on the bottom left is from the city of Portland, which is not quite like the ODOT-adopted sign, but there is a version that's very similar to that in terms of bicycle wayfinding. So there are signs out there that are standard in terms of bicycle wayfinding for that.
Do we run into any issues, living in this day and age, with discrimination issues, with, you know, where we place them at a height? If we have them in English only, are we running into any issues with that that we have to consider?
Not that I am aware of.
No, I don't think there are any regulations that say you have to provide the signs in any languages other than English, but for areas of the city where a population is known to exist that doesn't speak English, certainly that would be a good consideration to.
Okay, and then do we have to consider anything with ADA with our sign placement?
Well, sign placement, you would certainly want to consider ADA in terms of where the pole is in relation, you know, on a sidewalk, making sure that you still have at least three foot clear.
I guess, I'm talking height. You know, if I'm looking at this one, I think it's from Europe. I mean, we're probably up there about six feet high.
Yeah, and that one.
If you have someone in a wheelchair, you know, is this, I'm just throwing it out because as we discuss and move forward, I just want to make sure we're moving in the right direction and not setting ourselves up for trouble down the road.
So, no, not, and for that type of sign, there isn't at this moment. But there is, we do have, one of the technical memos that was in appendix has greater detail in terms of sign placement as well.
Great, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
And Mike, just a question before it's mailed, the issues being addressed?
They're available on the project website.
Right. I don't, you didn't get a paper copy. And I'm not sure whether, did you include those when you sent out the, or did you just have a link to our website?
Yeah, they're just, they're just all on the website. We gave them a PDF of the plan itself.
So we need to go dig them out.
They're fairly easy to find, and if you can't find them, call us, and we will help you get there.
Yeah, and the specific one I was mentioning, like, the guidelines are truly guidelines, I mean, I think in this sense, that provide some guidance for the city, for staff, in some of these design treatments. But they're certainly not, they're not considered standards at this point.
Okay, anybody else?
I'm going to go back just a quick second here. Under Adopt Bicycle Parking Requirements for All Land Uses Except Single Family Residences, can you just kind of touch on that a little bit, about what that might look like?
Yeah, so that could be something that would be put into your municipal code so that any new developments, commercial or institutional, would be required to provide a certain number of bicycle parking spaces based on the square footage of the site or based on the number of trips expected to come to the site. You could do it in a number of different ways.
I'm just trying to, owning a business in Nell Scott, we have a sidewalk, and that's it. There is nowhere else to park unless you're in with the traffic.
And so that would, yeah, and so that would certainly be a time when you'd work with the city and how that code is implemented, because?
Yeah, it could be that there's bicycle parking for a group of businesses or a group of parcels and not just for each individual parcel, and that would be up to the city to determine how, if it's written within the code.
So there's no standard for that right now?
Uh, no, there's no standard. We did provide some recommended language that the city could consider adopting into the code, but there's no specific standard.
Okay, thanks. Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have public testimony. Carl Mosley, you've signed up, would you come forward?
My name is Carl Mosley. I live at 1335 Northeast Warner Park, which is a new street inside Indian Shores. I'm interested in the success of the biking and walking plan in three ways. One, I was a member of the Project Advisory Committee, where I brought my background in local government, facilities management, and architecture. Secondly, I'm currently designing and building and living in a 10-unit subdivision in Indian Shores where I'm encouraging pedestrian activity. And third, I'm a ever-braver bike rider and daily long-distance walker in town. So all of these parts of my life are affected by this plan, and I do feel strongly about it. I'm impressed that the plan was developed with representatives from the safety, the business sector, social agencies, local government, experts, and involved citizens. It really was a broad range, and I did find that everyone that was there participating and felt strongly about different parts of the plan. I think this plan pulls their concerns together well. I believe this plan is realistic. I believe this plan is realistic. I believe it's flexible, and I think, most importantly, it reflects the local needs and the conditions of Lincoln City. And I think we can credit not only the committee, but the consultants sitting behind me for putting together a plan that truly represents what the city can use in the future. I feel that the city needs to create a safe, attractive means for pedestrians and bicyclists to move around town, as well as it will for people in motor cars. Projects that are suggested can be as simple as a place to lock your bike. Currently, I lock my bike to wooden benches that are set aside for some of the transit buses, because there are very few places in town, except for some public buildings, that have places to lock bikes. It can be as simple as that, the sign that you've discussed. They can obviously be more complicated, include pathways and sidewalks and street design. It is a broad look at what we can do in this city. And lastly, I'm convinced that these guidelines will, will be a vital step toward making Lincoln City more attractive to visitors, and creating a richer quality of life for its residents. And I hope that you will consider adopting the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's everyone that has, that has signed up. Is there anybody else in the audience? Any testimony for the, anybody else like to come up and speak? Please state your name and address into the microphone, please.
Thank you. My name is Paul Robertson. I reside at 2124 Northeast Reef Avenue in Lincoln City. I was a member of the PAC, helped put this together, and I just personally want to thank staff and the consultants and ODOT for the time that they put into it. The expertise that they provided was far and beyond anything that we could have done locally, from the citizen's side. Staff, of course, quite capable in their own regard, but bringing all that together was substantial. I strongly support the plan. I got to provide a lot of comment to it. I felt like every other person that was part of that project got to provide the same amount of comment and opportunity, and I felt people really were engaged with the process. I just, I just encourage you to, to move this forward, and basically just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anybody else like to come forward? I could even, please state your name and mailing address into the microphone.
Yes, my name is David Hilton. My address is 644 A Street in Springfield. I work for ODOT with the Transportation and Growth Management Program. We provided the grant for the development of the walking and biking plan. I realize that there is quite a bit, as someone said, this is a lot to take in. And I realize that the uncertainty around adopting this kind of plan might cause you to hesitate, to take action, and so I wanted to speak to a few points to help put this plan into context, and perhaps address some of your concerns. First off, let me start off by saying that implementing bicycle and pedestrian improvements in Lincoln City is going to be a challenge. You have challenging topography, the pattern of existing development, the amount or limited right-of-way that you have. And for that reason, we've provided a plan that has flexibility, because one size is not going to fit, not going to fit all in Lincoln City. And that's why the plan identifies recommended facilities for certain types of streets, but then identifies a series of alternatives that might be used on those types of streets. Now, the, with this flexibility, however, you need to realize that every time you go to implement one of these projects, you're going to have to work with the local property owners, business owners, and residents to determine what kind of facility is going to work best, and exactly how it's going to work well. How wide should the sidewalk be? If it's going to be on one side of the street, which side of the, of the street should it be on? How might that impact people's driveways and parking and so forth and so on? And that's going to be hard work. There, there's no way around it. But implementing any kind of improvements is going to require that kind of hard work. We could have come to you with a plan that just had hard and fast standards, that said for these types of streets, they have to have sidewalk on both sides of the street. But the practical reality is, every time you went to apply those standards and build those projects, you would hear from those property and business owners if that project didn't work, and in many cases, it would not work in that particular context. And so it's a practical matter, you're going to have to work through, work with those property owners to make those determinations, and when I say you, I mean the city, of course, your staff will be doing most of this work. But again, there's some hard work involved, and there's no way around that, but it's necessary in order to have the flexibility to be able to create an improvement that actually works within the context that you're trying to implement it. So that, that reality of kind of working through each project also has some bearing on the issue of funding. Again, there's no getting around that the needs for pedestrian and cycling improvements that we have identified in the plan, they exceed the resources that you have available. And for that reason, that's why we identified some additional funding sources that you might consider. But I wanted to make it clear that adoption of the plan does not equal a commitment on the city's part to build any of the specific projects that are in the plan, nor does it require the city to adopt any new funding via taxes or fees. The, the commitment to build any particular project happens when you develop your capital improvements plan. That's when you make a commitment to build the project, and that's when you identify the funding that you're going to use for that project. And you can make progress on making improvements to your bike and pedestrian system, even with the funding that you, that you have available now. Now, obviously, you can't do a lot of projects, and you certainly can't do all of them that are in the plan, but I encourage you to make progress with the funding that you have now, because small projects can make a big difference. Filling in sidewalk infill, particularly near schools, can allow kids to walk. If you walk, or if you hear from your disabled community, that they have a daily issue at trying to get over a sidewalk or a ramp, adding a curb ramp in that location can make a big difference to that person's day-to-day life, and it shows a commitment and a priority on your part when you go to seek grant funding or partnerships. The fact that you've been making progress with the funding that you have available, again, shows your commitment and shows that it's a priority for the city. And your capital improvements, capital improvement planning process gives you that annual or that regular cycle to go through, look at the universe of projects that are in your plan, talk to your citizens, identify the priorities for the, the short-term capital funding decisions that you are making. So at this point, you might be wondering, why should you adopt a plan that I just told you is going to be difficult to implement and that you can't afford? That's a very good question, and I would like to address that directly. First off, the plan provides the big picture for you to work towards. It's, it's just a reality that no city can afford to provide all of the improvements that their citizens or, or their city staff would like, would like to have. And even those cities that might be able to afford all of those improvements can't afford to do all of them at once. So we all have to make small steps towards a bigger picture, but we need to have that bigger picture in place to know that the small steps that we are taking are working towards something larger. So taking small steps like sidewalk infill can, can make an important difference in the day-to-day lives, as I just, just mentioned, but knowing that that sidewalk infill is helping to fill in a gap as part of a larger system that will eventually connect destination points, residents to schools, and shopping, and so forth, that's important and can help you prioritize those short-term investments. But more importantly, having a, a plan in place creates the opportunity to build these projects that you might not otherwise have. Because by having it in a plan, when development happens, you can look at that development, see what your plan for calls in that area. If that development is providing local streets, they can provide the facilities called for in the plan. They might be able to set back to provide right-of-way for facilities that are desired, may make contributions towards some of the facilities identified in the plan. When there are street construction projects, be they an overlay project, or perhaps sewer lines are going in, or utility projects or so forth, there's another opportunity, perhaps, to provide the sidewalks or bike lanes, if we know those facilities are needed in that location. When there are grant opportunities, and there are regular grant opportunities through the state, as well as sometimes there are special one-time opportunities, like the stimulus, again, having a list of projects provides you the basis to get going on those grant opportunities, and in many cases, having the project listed in the plan is a requirement for that grant funding. And so again, having the plan helps create that opportunity that you might not otherwise have. Finally, it helps create the, the opportunity for partnerships. If people see facilities listed in the plan, and if it aligns with their own priorities, it may create the opportunity for partnerships, say, with the tribes, or with the hospital, or other institutions, other people that are making investments that, that support your vision. Finally, as the representative of ODOT, I want to speak to improvements needed on Highway 101. We've definitely heard from citizens that improvements to Highway 101 are a high priority. Within an urban area, our standards would call for providing sidewalks, and given the level of traffic volume that you have and the speeds, we would like to provide at least bicycle lanes for sidewalks, if not something more separated, like a buffered bike lane or a cycle track. But as the practical reality, as you know, is we have limited right-of-way, and there's a lot of demand for the use of that right-of-way. So what we've proposed as part of this plan is certainly filling in the sidewalk gaps for the extent of 101. But in terms of providing bicycle facilities, we would like to provide the bicycle lanes where we can provide, where we have existing pavement width, and we can stripe them in. There are some places where we may need to do some deviations to our standard designs, perhaps narrow the lane downs in order to fit the bicycle lanes. And there are going to be places where we cannot provide them, because there's not enough room to provide the standard with the bicycle lane. And in those situations, we're effectively forcing the bicycle lane into traffic, so by default, we're providing what our standards call a shared-use roadway. So in those places where we had bicycle lanes and those bicycle lanes disappear, we would show them merging into the travel lane, and we would have signage saying, "Bikes and roadway." Because as, as a practical matter, that's what we're forcing them to do anyway, and that's not something new. That is currently legal under Oregon law. Bicycles have the right to use the roadway when there's no bicycle lane provided. So that, that signage would simply be reinforcing what already happens now, and what is already legal under Oregon law. In order to implement those changes on Highway 101, what we are recommending the city do is work with your local area commission on transportation to seek funding through our statewide transportation improvement program process. That, that's the program through which we funnel all the grant funds, and we're moving towards a single application process. So instead of having a bike-ped fund, and a scenic-by-way fund, and a transportation enhancement program, all with separate grant cycles, and all with different criteria, we're, we're moving towards a, a single application process. Bring us your need, and we'll figure out the funding bucket. And we're doing all that through the statewide transportation improvement plan, or program, rather, or STIP for short. We are fond of acronyms, as you know. I recommend that the city work with your local area commission on transportation, because they are making the recommendations for funding of local enhancement projects through the STIP. To have a detailed survey done, we need a detailed survey of the highway down to the inch, to know how much pavement, how much right-of-way we have to, to work with, so that then we can come up with a detailed design of how the sidewalk, sidewalk gaps get infilled, and a detailed striping and signage plan of how to stripe the highway to provide the bike lanes where we can, stripe those transition areas, and then put in the signage for the areas where we don't have enough room to provide the standard bicycle lane. So, as I said, I know there's a lot for you to consider, and I may have added to that, but I, I hope that I've helped put this into context in terms of what this plan does, how it works, and how it can benefit you. So if you have any questions for me about the plan itself in general, or about Highway 101, or just anything ODOT-related, I'm certainly welcome to answer those for you now.
Commissioners, anyone have any questions? We'll share your input. You cleared a lot of things up. Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak at this time? Any comment from representatives of public agencies? Okay, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, what's the pleasure of the commission? Session, or we have a, a motion to forward a recommendation to city council?
Well, I'll just throw in my two cents worth here, is, this has been a really eye-opening process for me, as just a citizen coming in to this. All the bodies brought together, all the thoughts, all the interests, and coming up with this great plan, highly in favor of what's gone on here. And to see, I don't know what I'm trying to say, I think we've got a really good plan here, and something we can work with for the future.
Well, it sounds like you were involved in it from the get-go, or?
Yeah, and it was, it was very interesting, and I've got to say, just the openness and to all ideas and thoughts, and it was a very, for lack of a better word, a very democratic process that was exciting to be part of. I, I can give my full buzzing on this. I think this is a great first step for us.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay, is there a motion to recommend, we forward this to city council?
Second.
Okay, we'll have a roll call, please, Kate.
Shannon?
Excuse me, just a second. Before you do that, the, the motion is, is just to forward it, is there a, a recommendation of what they should do with it, like, adopt it, for example?
Well, I'm reading off my script. So, the motion, I guess, if somebody would like to make the motion that the city council, we forward this to city council with a recommendation that they adopt it.
I'll revise my motion forward, the walking, walking and bike program, plan, through city council with a motion, by, motion for adoption.
Second.
Roll call, please, Kate.
Shannon?
Yes.
Evans? Bryson?
Yes.
Kidd?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Fearborn?
Yes. Okay, the city council will hold a public hearing on this matter on Monday, October 8th, 2012, at 6:00 PM, right here in these chambers, so if anybody else would like to participate or attend that public hearing, it'll be here. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next we have old business. Any old business? No old business. Any new business?
No new business.
Oh, new business. Reports and comments?
No comment from me.
Joan, do you have anything?
None.
Commissioners, anybody from the public wish to say anything at this time? Okay, next meeting, future agenda items.
The next meeting is scheduled for October 16th, and we have one agenda item on it, a zoning ordinance amendment relating to clear vision provisions at corners. And staff is, is requesting a continuance on that matter to December 4th, 2012, which would mean, unless you say you want to meet, there would be no reason to meet on the 16th.
Need a motion for that?
No.
A motion on the continuance would be good.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion that we grant staff a continuance?
So moved. I don't remember the date, but December?
December 4th, 2012.
December 4th, 2012.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you got your extra time, sir. Is there, now that we've given you that extra time, what is, how are we doing with that, the clear vision thing?
Well, that's one of the reasons we're asking for extra time.
Well, it makes sense, but, okay, never mind. Okay, is there anything else?
So, do I properly assume that there's no reason to meet on the 16th, as far as you all are concerned? Because we have nothing on the agenda?
Nothing. Vacation is good. Okay, so the next meeting, then, will be when?
It will be Tuesday, November 6th and 7th. It'll be the, the two nights in a row that we've discussed with you.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, sounds good. Anybody else?
Only if you know in advance, for some reason, that you're not, you may not be able to make it on November 6th. I'd appreciate it if you gave me a call.
Now, the November 6th, that's just a planning commission hearing, isn't it? Doesn't have another joint work session?
That's a planning commission hearing on the referral from the city council-proposed annexation of Rhodes End. And we've scheduled it for two nights, and it's a Tuesday and Wednesday.
Tuesday and Wednesday.
The 7th is a spillover night, if you don't finish in a reasonable amount of time. Right now, if you don't finish a meeting by 10, you're required to take a vote if you want to continue to...
Would it be appropriate at this time to put a definite time limit on that? I was, I forgot, that is also election night, is it not?
It is, although you don't start until 6:00, and there's a ballot box right here. But I know that if there are other things people want to attend to, normally, your meeting would finish at 10:00. And then you would take a vote if, for some reason, people wanted to extend. But that's why we scheduled the second night, so that if there's a lot of people who want to testify, or for any reason, can't finish on the first night on Tuesday, that you would have that second night to spillover.
Okay, so 10 o'clock is agreeable to everyone?
Well, we've noticed that unless you're not working and you have the opportunity for a long afternoon nap, that sometime after a couple hours, it's sometimes hard to focus. People get tired.
No, I would just wonder if anybody, anyone wanted to end sooner than that?
I thought that's where you were going.
That's where I was going.
I was just sort of ignoring you.
Yes, no, I know. I figured that.
Four-hour marathon.
Well, we used to have six- or seven-hour marathons.
Let's not visit that.
We're not going to go there. Because it was election night, I just wanted to make sure that everyone would be prepared to be here till 10 o'clock, then.
Well, we do have the second night, so I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Is that going to be the only thing on the agenda that night, I hope?
Yes.
Okay.
As far as I know, it's the only thing on the agenda, and if anything is scheduled, we'll try to schedule that for another time.
If there's scheduling conflicts, can't we vote, just advise you? I'm not planning it, but I don't know my schedule yet that far out. I'll know soon.
Yeah, the only problem is if, for some reason, we didn't have a quorum, that would be a problem.
Can the quorum change night to night? Listening, first night, you might be taking a vote the next, something, so you need to have your quorum both nights, but that vigils within the quorum can change?
Theoretically, but I would prefer to see all the same faces on both nights. If somebody gets the flu, you know, things happen, but preference.
Better.
But if you know in advance, just let me know.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? We're adjourned.